Good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, and we are beginning our meeting tonight at 7:03 PM here at the Higgins Middle School Library on Perkins Street. Like to start off the meeting with a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance. We have some special students here today from the McCarthy School that we'll introduce in a moment. But I did want to say a couple of things. We are meeting tonight is being recorded live or being taken live and recorded by PBD TV as always. The minutes from the meeting are being taken by our recording secretary, Laura Bo, and we will have an opportunity for open microphone. And if there's anybody that would like to join us, that opportunity will be theirs at that time. And then anybody that would like to join us remotely will have that ability and option as well. But it's great to have the McCarthy School here. And if everybody could please stand, we're going to do a brief moment of silence, and then the McCarthy School is going to help me with the pledge of allegiance. So if everybody could please stand, please. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Vidal for our special introduction tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Bentecourt. We're very pleased tonight to have the mustangs of the McCarthy School here today. We have some fourth and fifth graders. I want to thank Dr. Zatoli for bringing these students before us. I think I see Mrs. Marrero and Ms. Champagny as well. Thank you for coming. And then we have a lot of parents and friends and families here as well. Our fourth graders today are Bryce, Caleb, Olivia, and Maria. And our fifth graders are Tommy, Julian, Ariel, and Dara. And so we'll turn it over to you. We're very excited to hear all the wonderful things going on at the McCarthy School this year.
If it doesn't do the presentation, that's good because there's nothing very detailed on them. Great. So my name is Dr. Zatoli. I am the principal at the McCarthy School. And this year, we have many new friends and many new staff. So we are working on building a sense of belonging for our staff and students. And we are also doing that through leadership opportunities. So we're going to have our fourth graders and fifth graders talk a little bit about leadership. And then Mrs. Champagny will come up to talk a little bit about some of the work that we're doing around sense of belonging. And then Mrs. Rose had wanted to be there, be here. She's our guidance counselor, but she is home with her two little ones. And she is also a huge help with all of the student leadership. So I'm going to turn it over to my students. All right, Caleb.
Hi, my name is Caleb Thomas. I am from the fourth grade from McCarthy School. This is our school motto, and we say it every morning as part of our announcements. CARE stands for Cooperation, Acceptance, Resilience, and Empathy.
Hi, my name is Maria. Hi, my name is Maria. I'm from McCarthy School, and I'm in fourth grade. And we're going to be talking about the responsible, respectful. It's the first time we are having students lead for recycling. We want to keep our school clean and safe.
Hi, my name is Olivia, and I'm from the McCarthy School. We are excited to help the school by going to classes and picking up their recycling. We are teaching others by being role models.
Hi, my name is Bryce from the McCarthy School, and I'm in fourth grade. And I'm excited to help set an example for the next year's fourth graders.
Hello, my name is Tommy. I'm from the McCarthy School, and I'm in fifth grade. To be a part of the student government.
Hi, my name is Dara. Mustang Mobile Squad helps the teachers with dismissal and the students find their bus lines.
Hi, my name is Ariel. And in the morning, we help the kindergarteners if they need help. And we hand out green tickets to the students who are doing the expectations. The expectations are walking quietly and no running.
My name is Tommy, and I'm from the McCarthy School, and I'm in fifth grade. To be a part of the student government, you need to be responsible, respectful, safe, and a leader. I had to write a five paragraph essay about how I can help the school by being a role model. When you are selected, you become a representative for the classrooms.
On the student government, we organize assemblies, and we collect the green tickets. The green tickets are cards you get for being responsible, respectful, and safe. The government collects food for the food drive. They collect the money for the pennyworths, and they are announcers for the talent show.
We hope you learned a lot about the leadership opportunities we have at the McCarthy School.
And then one thing that we also just wanted to share, Mrs. Champagny.
So Mrs. Champagny was coming tonight to be supportive and didn't realize they thought the children were going to talk about the slides. But just to give you guys a heads up, Mrs. Rose, our school counselor and I, we have always done an informal identification of a trusted adult and who that is in the school. And this year, we are formalizing that process to make sure that everyone is identified and able to identify someone or more at home or at school. If you look to the picture on the left, it is a worksheet that we do have for our students that are KDA2, so they can draw a picture of a trusted adult at the McCarthy School and at home. And on the right-hand side, we make them write it out. And so right now, we are in the process. We did complete all of fourth grade. I'm happy to report that all our fourth graders have been able to identify everyone, someone, at least in every category. Tomorrow morning, fifth grade, you're up. And so we're actually working our way down. We're doing fourth and fifth, third, and then down just because we feel like it takes a little longer for our kindergarten, first grades to establish relationships in the school. That's where we're at. I'm sorry. And we're apparently sharing it at parent conferences. Yes, yes, we will be doing that too if you want to see the roadshow on that one. Anything else?
That's it.
Guys, I need more help than you. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Well, thank you. That was a great job, McCarthy School. And I want to thank each of you for being here tonight and for speaking about the McCarthy School and also for being leaders in your school. That's very important for the grades that are younger, that they can look up to you. And it's not easy being a leader sometimes. And I want to thank all of you for being your willingness and your bravery in doing that. So it's great to have you here today. That was a great presentation. Each of you spoke very, very well. And it's great to have you here. And I didn't know if there was any comments or questions from the school committee. Mr. Swanson.
Thank you, Dr. Zatoli, for bringing your class in, my school in. Ms. Champagny, Ms. Rose, who I know is not here. Thank you for the guidance you've been giving the students as well. To the students, two words that I heard that really stuck out, one that was repeated several times is role model. For y'all, how does it feel to be a role model to those younger students and those that are coming behind you? Give me a thought on what it is to be a role model and how it feels.
Anybody want to share?
That's fine. That's okay.
Can I share what they've told me before?
Absolutely, please.
It's a lot of work.
And that's a good thing, that being a leader does take a lot of work. But you guys are setting out very strong, and I appreciate that. The other word that came up was empathy. As you grow and as you're helping those younger than you through school, your empathy is going to be seen, and you're going to learn to feel, take from their feelings and help them do better. And don't lose that empathy as you grow. So again, continue. This is a great place to start. As you get into junior high, come into this building in the next couple of years, you go through high school, continue to be leaders because that's what's going to make our city and yourselves very strong. So thank you for all you've done. And again, to our educators that are encouraging these students, thank you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, mustangs. You did a great presentation, and this was really interesting to learn about your student government at the school. Are you all having fun doing it, serving as representatives? Yeah, okay. And have you had interesting experiences with the younger students? Have they come to you to ask you to help them or to help work on a project? Someone's shaking their head right there. Yeah.
Do you want to talk about how you help in the morning with the buses? Remember the first few days of school too? Do you want to talk about it? You can tell them what you do in the afternoon. You have to come up to the mic.
Yeah, tell us about it.
In the afternoon, I usually help kindergarteners get to their bus lines and sit down and stuff so they don't get mixed up on where it is.
That's excellent. Yeah, that's great. Because you know what? All of you, you talked about responsibility and taking care of your classmates, your school, your families. I mean, you're doing the right thing. So thank you very much, and I hope you always enjoy it. And I hope someday, when you're off of student government, you come out to adult government and run for school committee. Because that's, you're learning many of the same lessons we have to learn. So good luck to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. All right, round of applause. Great job, McCarthy School. That was excellent. Take a quick photo. We take a quick photo with students. I want to thank all the families for being here today and supporting your students, of course. Okay, next item on the agenda is the minutes. We do have regular school committee meeting minutes from September 9th, 2025. I'd open those up for discussion and a vote.
Motion to receive and approve.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion for approval by Mrs. Dunn of the minutes from September 9th, 2025, regular school committee meeting, seconded by Mr. Swanson. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Huckman. Mr. Swanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Amico.
Yes.
Great, thank you. We do have a couple of warrants today for approval, and I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Carpenter for motions.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 6159 in the amount of $3,782,486.54, dated September 30th, 2025, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant number 6159, seconded by Mr. Amico. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Huckman.
Yes.
Mr. Swanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Amico.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 6160 dated September 30th, 2025, in the amount of $149,251.09, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant number 6160, seconded by Mr. Amico. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Huckman.
Yes.
Mr. Swanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Amico.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Next item, number three, continued business. Mrs. Dunn, any update on the PBD Veterans Memorial High School MSBA project?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, we held our seventh building, school building committee meeting. And the topics on our agenda were planning out the calendar for an activity. Oh gee, I'm sorry. We have been working through the summer on the OPM selection process. There's a smaller group, a small working group, that is coming up with the language to be used in the advertisement to generate applications from companies that hope to become our OPM. So the decision was made today by the group to put in, put our work together and to be able to advertise beginning on January 1st. And that is going to be a good date, start the year off right, as the mayor had said. So we'll be working on that language. And in the meantime, it's going to give committee members the time to go out to look at schools, visit sites, try to see what you like, and come up with all of the criteria we want for an OPM, because that is one of the key, it is the key personnel that will work with us. And we want to make sure that the company we choose is going to reflect PBD's ideals, reflect what we want in the high school, and be able to represent us as we go forward, and then choose a design team, which is your architect, and then move forward. The next step would be to choose the construction company. But you put your OPM in first. So that's why it's critical that we do this work now, get our paperwork ready, and then we want to look in the beginning of the year. We felt that that was a good timing to be able to get the companies that are going to be applying for this and be able to cast a wide net. So it was a good meeting. We talked about visits to other schools, and then we had an update on visiting the Greater Lawrence Technical High School Aviation Program. That was a lot of fun. I was lucky. I went with Dr. Vidal, with Ms. Randall, and Ms. Spinoza. And we had a tour of the school, but also specifically the aviation program. It was amazing what they went through to get that program in place. It's a lengthy process. And it was really helpful to talk with their director superintendent and the staff who worked on this to find out exactly what the process is. To do this kind of a course, you have to get FAA approval before you get DES approval. If PBD does this, we would be only the third high school program in the state. Greater Lawrence is the second, and the first one is out at Westfield. The, oh gosh, it was so interesting. The students end up working on plane engines, airplane engines. But there's two components to the program. They don't just learn to work on the mechanics of the engine. They have to also learn on the mechanics on the outside of an airplane. There's wings that move and rotors. And we walked into a huge hangar, which is truthfully a huge classroom. And in front of us was a helicopter and then a small airplane. They also have a hangar at the local airport up that way so that the students can actually work on planes that are going to fly. You are not allowed to move an airplane on land. It has to be on an airport. So they have to do that work at an airport as they move up through their grades. They have just started this year with their ninth grade. And as with many CTE programs, you build it. You bring in your ninth grade, whoops, sorry, ninth grade, they'll move up to 10th grade. It was a great experience to see it and to learn about it. And we're doing this at the right time because it is a lengthy process. And Dr. Vidal, if you'd like to add to that, it was fun, but it was really interesting to hear about the process. Go ahead and add.
Absolutely. Thank you. It was an amazing experience to be able to go there and to see the program. And as Mrs. Dunn said, it is a good time for us to explore this. Certainly not a guarantee, but it's a good chance for us to do a deep dive into this. And the process would line up very nicely with the start of our school with the new building. So it is about a four-year process to get approved. And us having close proximity to Beverly Airport, that would be our partner airport, and we would be able to send students there for the, in the field training. And the airport is very much open to that. We've had meetings with their representatives. And again, we're trying to kick all the tires and make sure that this is something that we could do and do our due diligence. So, you know, very exciting to get out there and to see it, and this could be a great opportunity for our students.
It was a great experience to just to talk to some of the students. We didn't get to speak to the aviation students, but we got a tour of the whole school, the campus. And we were talking to some of the carpentry students and the plumbing students. And that's always really fun to hear what they're doing. And usually, you get to talk to seniors. So they're really excited with the work they're doing. But anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has them. But our next meeting is probably going to be September 28th, I'm sorry, October 28th for the school building committee. The working group, the one that's working on the language with the OPM, we're working off of a totally different schedule because we're doing things online, submitting language. Thankfully, Mr. Rippon and Mr. Doucette are helping us with this. And that's going along with our regular meetings. So there'll be more reports to the school building committee. And we'll also be setting up the tours for the various schools in the area that we'd like to go look at. We want to see like Waltham High School, Everett High School, Dougherty High School, and we're planning road trips.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Any questions or thoughts? I think 2026 is going to be a big year. That's when we start to assemble the team, which is great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to go to our superintendent's report. Turn it over to Dr. Vidal and his team.
Thank you, Mayor Bentecourt. So the next item on the superintendent's report is the FY26 Fair Share Airmarks. So PBD were very fortunate to have very supportive people in our state delegation and, you know, Senator Lovely and Representative Walsh and Representative Cairns. And they're always very supportive of PBD. And so during the budget, we talked about, you know, what's happening with the fair share money and, you know, where does that go? And we were able to have Representative Walsh led the charge in creating an airmark within this year's group. I think there was about $10 million spread out across the Commonwealth to go to schools. And Representative Walsh really advocated for $100,000 to go to the PBD Public Schools to continue the Science from Scientists program. So this is in our all eight elementary schools, and we received this airmark, and the funding just came through, and we're able to continue this program. So a little bit about Science from Scientists. Back in 2020, the West Elementary School PTO was able to bring this great program where scientists from the field come to work with fourth and fifth graders once a month and do hands-on learning activities with a real scientist. And the teachers get the benefit of professional development by co-teaching with a real scientist, and it's an amazing opportunity. And in 2020, the lieutenant governor at the time did a virtual visit, because it was during COVID, but did a virtual visit to the West and talked about how wonderful the program was, and we were able to see it hands-on. And it was something that we brought to the school committee and said, wouldn't this be wonderful to have in all eight elementary schools? And so in '21, we were able to bring this to all eight elementary schools through ESAR funding. So we used some COVID funds for this enrichment program, which really helped build our science scores and helped create these enrichment opportunities for our fourth and fifth graders across all eight elementary schools. You may, you know, recall, as the ESAR funding went away, we have to make some tough budget decisions and figure out how we're going to fund things through the generosity of the PBD Education Foundation. We were able to bring that back to our schools last year. They were able to do that for one year. And then as we move forward this year, we were looking for creative funding sources, and Rep. Walsh came through and was able to get this additional funding source. And basically, what this does is this saves funding from us and appropriate a budget so that the school committee doesn't have to make another difficult decision. We were able to do this, and this was able to save $100,000 in our operating budget for additional things. So I just wanted to share that this did come through, and a huge debt of gratitude to Representative Walsh. And in this photo, you can see some of our students went to a field trip at Fenway Park through Science from Scientists and saw some STEM activities and got a tour of the park last year. So these are some of the amazing things that happened through the generosity and the advocacy that we have. I know you, our committee has really worked with our state reps and our senators to make sure that PBD is receiving all the funding that they can get. And so this is just an example of one of the great opportunities.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you very much. I'm thrilled that this is continuing because I know how many kids enjoy this and they're learning so much from this program. I'd like to ask, can we send a letter specifically to our legislative delegation to thank them for that earmark? Because that's really key for our schools. It gives every one of our elementary students a nice experience, great exposure to science and to scientists. And you never know how that's going to change some child's future. They might decide to go into science or medicine, and it's because of that program. So if we could thank them for it, send a letter from the school committee, I think that would be important to recognize them.
Absolutely. We'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Amico.
Thank you for your chat. Dr. Vidal, thank you, and thank you to our state delegation. As I said at our last, I think it was last meeting, they're, they always show up for us, and they're always asking, you know, what do you need? What can we do for you? At least, you know, that's what I always get out of them when we're at a fundraiser or a charity event. And I just want to thank them, and especially Tom Walsh, because Bev and I were talking earlier about how he said this was the toughest job he's had in politics when he was here as a school committee member. So he doesn't forget where he came from. And I know, you know, Rep. Cairns and State Senator Lovely feel the same way. They know the tough work that we do here on the committee, and it doesn't go unnoticed from their eyes. And they try to support us as much as they can. So thank you to them. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Amico.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is the MCAS update from 2025. So the MCAS results were published yesterday, and student reports will be going out in the next couple of weeks. So I want to just create a little bit of context and then turn it over to Dr. Chase. As we look at the results this year, there's a lot of opportunities for celebration and growth. We continue growth. We continue to close the gap from the pre-pandemic learning and we have a number of, of areas, especially in the area of English Language Arts, to, to celebrate. And I think that's a large part due to the investment that we've made in the curriculum and the support that we have. Really excited about some, some of the things that we're about to share. Again, MCAS is a single data point, so it helps us to plan forward, but we know that there's a lot more that goes into this and, and we have other metrics and, and other ways to look at what students need and we want to make sure that we're looking at students holistically and providing as much as we can. This was an interesting year because at the secondary level, MCAS is not a graduation requirement. So that did impact, you know, some of the students and at the state level, they talked about looking at some of the writing scores and some of the open responses. Maybe some students didn't put forth their best effort and, and that's okay. That's, again, we take it in the context of, of what we have. And some of the other things that we were thinking about as we looked at it, we noticed that there are some gaps in grade four and this, this year's grade five students. And we realized that if we went back in time to when they started kindergarten, they were the hybrid model. And so we had chosen, some of the kids were going every other day, but kindergarten in particular went four days a week, but only half days. And we're seeing that there are some gaps there and so we're, we're working with our schools to fill those gaps. But they're identifying that that cohort of students received half-day pre-K for the first four or five months of school, a half-day kindergarten for the first four or five months of school. We're seeing a little bit of an impact there. So that's something that we take into context. And then the other thing is, is we did have some movement and, and whatnot. So I think when we look at, for example, McCarthy School, who is here tonight, had a very different school year last year. So some of their scores may have dropped, but they are still very close to the state average. But in terms of their accountability, given the, the ins and outs of students that they were receiving over time, they received a number of students throughout the year last year. So that's a little bit of an anomaly for them. They've had great data. So that's just a point that I, I want to make as, as we come out. And then, you know, just the last piece is we've had a lot of positive change, especially that adoption of the, of the high-quality instructional material. So I think that has really spurred some great scores that you're going to see and some great growth that we're seeing in the ELA. And so we have our continued effort to build our consistency and then the long-term effects of this programming. And I don't want to bury the lead here, but last year, we celebrated the Center School as, as a school of recognition, one of 57 schools that received that in 2024. And it was our first ever school of recognition, which was a huge deal. So not to be outdone, this year, we're proud to announce the Burke School has been recognized. Out of 1,800 schools, K to 12, they're one of 61 schools that is a school of recognition for 2025. And just five years ago, they were a school that required assistance and SOS, SSOS came in and, and DESI was there and, and, and for them to come out of that, the journey that they've, that they've come out with some PD that we received from Landmark and with a co-teaching model and with a ton of instructional support, the teachers and, and the leaders in that building have done a ton of work. The families have really done a ton of work with our students and they are a 2025 school of recognition. So we'll be doing a little ceremony for them at some point and I'll share that. But that's a really exciting piece that I wanted to share and I do want to turn it over to Dr. Kelly to give a little bit more of the context and some of the results.
Okay. Dr. Chase? I'll answer to it. So when we look at how we approach teaching and learning, we are guided by the work that we've done with our partners, TNTP. They have been with us along the way focusing on building a sense of belonging and engagement among students and then from their consistency, because when things are consistent across a district, we can support one another, we can share best practices and we can help problem solve. And it's been nice to see how teachers and leaders have come together to really think through how we do the adoption of our ELA curriculum, for example. And then the last piece is the coherence. So when we have different groups of stakeholders all helping out and working towards the same goal, when we have parents as partners, when we have leaders who are going to PD to understand what's happening with a particular adoption, when we have teachers working as teams and helping one another out, all of that builds a sense of coherence and can, can be the building blocks for success in the future. So on the next slide, we have a lot of numbers and what we did was we just got this data ourselves as public data. And so we pulled one sample of a celebration because it's really important when you're in the day-to-day and all the details and you're just pushing along and pushing along to really take a moment to celebrate. And each of our schools had a reason to celebrate one thing or another within their experience. So if we look at the Brown School, for example, their grade five math scores, 37% were meeting or exceeding expectations, which is a 17% increase from last year. At the Burke School, grade three ELA, 54% of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations, which was a 32% increase from the year before. At the Carroll School, grade four ELA, 25% meeting and exceeding expectations, a 10% increase. At McCarthy, there was an 11% increase in grade four ELA. At the South School, in grade three ELA, you'll notice a pattern with this ELA, 48% meeting or exceeding expectations, which is a 19% increase. And then at the Welch, grade four ELA, 19% meeting or exceeding expectations, which is a 3% increase. At the West School, you'll see grade five with a 54% meeting or exceeding rate and that's a 32% increase from last year. When we move to the middle school, grade six ELA, and if you think about what's been happening over time, we adopted K-5 ELA materials. We're in our fourth year, but last year, we started in earnest to bring in new ELA materials for the middle school. And you'll see that grade six, 30% meeting or exceeding expectations, which is a 7% increase. So we're starting to see the benefits in closing the gaps of our students being exposed to high-quality instructional materials, our teachers really pushing high-quality tasks, asking the kids to quote material, making sure that they're looking at the text when they're making a response. And so our kids from fifth grade are coming into sixth grade better prepared and then you just set that trajectory off. At the high school, the celebration is towards the attaining English language proficiency by our ML students. So they are exceeding their targets and that is at a 32.8%, which is a 16.5% increase from last year. These celebrations really are numbers on a, on a screen right now, but there's a whole story behind that with the human beings that are really working hard every single day. So from the classroom teachers that are trying out new things, and that's really difficult to do, but they're pushing along, to our students who are being asked to do more than ever, to the leaders who are giving up time to go to professional development so that they can better support the work that's happening, and our curriculum directors, Emily Moore, Deb Jackson, who, anything you throw at them, they're like, we're game for it as long as it's good for, for kids. So there are so many people that are, are helping in this, this area. And then, of course, the parents and families at home that are making sure that kids are getting to school every day. That matters when they're in front of us. We can do lots of great things. So when we look at our accountability data, each year, we get data that looks at if we're meeting our targets that are set for us by the state. So if you look at this chart, you'll see that each of our schools gets a, a classification of either needing assistance or not needing assistance. So several years ago, we were looking at a couple of schools that were needing assistance and now we are not requiring assistance. When we look at our progress towards targets, we see that the majority of schools are looking at substantial progress or meeting or exceeding, and then in some cases, moderate progress. And finally, the school of recognition with the Burke. And that's because, again, they're working towards closing those gaps and you want to see where people are starting out and then where they're, they're landing. But you can see with a lot of that green there, that there is progress that's being made. And in cases where it's not so green, we look at growth and we look at context to make sure that that story behind the numbers is being explored and that we can create a plan and move forward. Okay. And this is a, a big thank you slide. So there are investments that are made by this committee, by the taxpayers, that allow us to move forward in a direction where we can give our students the best materials that are out there. We can provide the professional learning to make sure that that learning is happening every day in the classroom. And so the supports that are helping us along in, in this work are the consistent use of the high-quality instructional materials. We focused on ELA K through five. We focused on six through 12 in the past year and a half for ELA and then also with Reveal Math in six through 12. There's a focus on center-based instruction so that mantra of every student, every day, is one that is lived when you walk through the classrooms. And that ensures that every student gets the attention that they need to make the progress from wherever they're starting. There's instructional support from building leadership, the whole team coming together, and then high-quality professional development for teachers in the content areas. We really do look at what teachers say to us in terms of feedback and what they need and then try to build a program throughout the year that meets their needs. And we're seeing really great gains from that as well in terms of the feedback that we get following each professional development day. And then finally, the leadership professional learning to complement what's happening in the, in the classrooms. So thank you for making that happen. And there's always room to grow. So for every celebration, we never rest on here's one thing to celebrate, but we really look critically at the data and identify areas where we also need to improve. And that work is never done and I, I think personally, that's some of the fun part of teaching and learning, that it's a perfectionist dream because you, you're always working towards that next step. So, and it's really fun and exciting to work alongside teachers and kind of muddle through some of the problems of practice and then see success on the other end. So when we look at these celebrations, we're really excited for the teachers knowing that that win is going to the work that they're doing in the classrooms with, with students. So for next steps, when we look about at growth and continuous improvement, we want to focus on increased, focus on early literacy with the PRISM grant, including the adoption of HQIM materials for pre-K literacy, working with the high dosage tutoring through DESI and PRISM grants to make sure that students at the youngest grade levels are getting the foundational skills they need. Continued support of co-teaching and language acquisition. When we find that teachers push into the classroom and there's co-teaching that's happening, we see good gains on the side of the student progress. And then a focus on consistency, coherence, and belonging. For our needs, when we look at all of the celebrations that are listed, there's a pattern of the, of the ELA for the most part. We would like to see that success in math as well and that would be the next thing on the wish list for looking at high-quality instructional materials for math and K-5. And then finally, a renewed commitment to STEM with instructional leadership and support in those areas to make sure that we're not unbalanced and we're really giving our students the best education that we can in all subject areas.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Chase. Turn it back over to the mayor if there's any questions or comments. Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the school committee members? Mr. Swanson?
Thank you. Thuridh, Dr. Chase, just for, for the audience, could you explain the chart, the 25% target and the accountability percentile, what that actually is measuring? Just for, for, for those that are watching, can understand the charts.
So the Department of Education sets goals for us and that's, when you think of those goals, it's how are we getting towards that ultimate like win on a scale of like one to 99, let's say? And so what they do is they measure out those goals and they tell us how much we have to improve in order to say we are meeting or exceeding a target. And there's lots of data points within there. So you have to look at the places where we are gaining points and then places where we still need to close those gaps. So for us, it's kind of like a report card that tells us this is where we're doing well, keep the, keep the gas on there, but then also this is where we need to grow and how do you look at closing those gaps? So from there, we look at the different items. We have an item analysis that we can look at and this is all public information. And you can see how close or how far we are away from state average. And so that's always interesting to look at. And then we can look by school to see what are the areas, are there patterns that we need to, to look at? So when we start to close those gaps, DESI will then give us a determination about how we need assistance or not. That's one thing. And then the other piece is thinking about progress towards targets. So they look at last year's information and data and they put a weight on that. Then they look at this year's data and how we performed this year and they put another weight on that. They combine the two and then they determine if we're meeting that progress or not in assigning us a number.
Thank you very much. That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Chase. My question was on probably the next, the next slide. It was actually the last slide that said that we need adoption of high-quality instructional materials in math. Now, the program we use now is that, what is it called? StarMath or?
So we use Math in Focus and I think what you might be referring to is the Renaissance Platform where we assess the students to see where they are in math.
Okay. And so do we need to choose a new curriculum for the math program?
So the Math in Focus program is not considered high-quality instructional material. We have been using that for some time. It's not that you can't work with it, but when you see the gains that are related to using high-quality instructional materials, there's a difference because it's not just the materials, but all the training and thinking that goes with it.
Have you started looking at other, other recommended materials? I know that's a lengthy process. Have we started to do that?
So I think we, we have the process pretty down pat because we've done that three or four times now. So it's, it's nice and it's comfortable now, whereas at first it was very scary. But we do have the process down pat. They do vet materials through the Department of Education. So they use ed reports. They also use a site called Curate and that's when we look at ed reports first, which is national, and then say, well, Massachusetts, we want to look at our own special lens because we have a way of doing things in Massachusetts. And so these are groups of teachers who really kick the tires on a bunch of different curriculum materials and then they provide ratings for that. From that list, we work with teachers typically to narrow it down. We create a vision for what we want for a particular program. We narrow it down to materials that we want to test out and then we field test versus pilot. And the difference between that is a pilot, you're just working with one set of materials and then you tend to fall in love with it because you get used to it. But with a field test, you do shorter amounts of time, but you test out multiple products for an equal length of time, then create some consensus about what worked, what didn't with them and give lots of feedback to see which one works best for the district and is the best match.
And have we started that process yet or are you in that yet?
For math, no. So in the past, we have worked with different grant programs and that's how we started with the ELA adoption for K-5. That's also what funded a good chunk of our ELA adoption for grade six, 12. And then for math, we had some support with DESI, with the High Quality Instructional Materials Network. So for the ELA, we're all set, but for the K through five math, there hasn't been that piece for us at the moment. So we would really be looking at what we can do with budget.
How does that integrate? If I can ask another couple of questions. How does it integrate into the six to 12 math? Are we okay with those math materials or do we need to look at something that's complementary to those? I know there was always, you know, always concern to make sure that the programs were well-integrated. How are we at that point?
So for six through 12 math, they are in the second year of implementation. So last year was the first year and DESI uses this mantra of try, do, own. So the first year is really about trying out the materials, figuring out what works, where you need support. The second year is doing the program, which is really jumping in now that you understand all the materials that come with it. And then the third year is really owning it and being able to look at data and see, you know, where you need that, that additional support. So if we did an adoption for K-5, we would look to speak as a vertical team to what's happening in grade six, 12 and then see what are the demands when the kids are going into middle school and then working that maybe into the vision to say this is what we need for our K-5 adoption. And that might help the team whittle down what are their choices.
Okay. When would you like to start that process?
Yesterday.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and, and Dr. Vidal, if, if, if we could, if you could talk about, you know, a schedule of, or the plan. I know that curriculum adoption takes, takes.
It does, it does take about a year if you, if you really, in seriousness, it does take about a year to do it.
And, and yeah, sure. I'd, I'd love to jump in on this too. And, and I think we were very strategic about choosing ELA first. In 2020, we had a curriculum called Journeys. You may remember, it was from 1999. And so that's really why we're seeing these great gains is, is an investment in taking enough time, as, as Dr. Chase said, taking enough time to make sure that we provide the professional development and, and the support necessary that our teachers aren't overwhelmed. We couldn't, we couldn't do two curriculum adoptions at the same time. And so I think now we're in a pretty good place. Look at that. It's like Mike Pence. Look at that, it's like Mike Pence. You got that. Now we're in a good place, I think, with ELA, and we would be ready. And so I would say maybe in the spring, we would come to the committee and say, let's start a K to 5 curriculum adoption process. And it would be a multi-year process, but we would want to make sure that, you know, our teachers are now comfortable with HMH and the ELA curriculum and how they're running their classrooms. And so now, you know, we'll continue that work, and then side by side, we would be able to do a math curriculum. So I think that was something we would look at for potentially starting as early as the spring.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Miko?
Mr. Mayor, Dr. Chase, thank you so much for all you do with all of those stats, all those numbers, all those percentages. For me, the proof is in the pudding. Every June, at the end of the year, I get to list all the schools that our kids are going to, our young adults are going to, and they're going to great engineering schools and great nursing programs and business schools, pre-law programs, pre-med, military, some going into the workforce. So we may have a year or two that we're down, but we regroup, our scores go back up, and I think it's the resiliency of our teachers and our staff and our students that gets them there. So thank you for all you do, and I have a lot of confidence that when I read off the schools that our students will be going to next fall, they'll be going to elite schools like they always do. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mr. Huckman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Vidala and Dr. Chase. Congratulations to the Burke School, second school in our district to receive the School of Recognition. Quite an accomplishment, quite an achievement, something to be extremely proud of, and hopefully they'll be celebrating that in the days and weeks to come. Dr. Chase, thank you for this very, very detailed report. Thank you for highlighting the positives mainly with regard to MCAS. You know, as my time here has gone on, my investment or beliefs in MCAS has kind of dwindled, so I don't want to, I'm not going to get too much into it. I do like to see, you know, that none of our schools require assistance. There's been substantial progress in several schools, and at least progress in all of the schools that are in the district. So that's quite an achievement, and, you know, thankfully to, thankful to, for our staff and our teachers and our administrative team for putting that together. You talk about educational materials, and that's really where I want to focus a little bit. And I understand that the, it sounds like the initial investment is going to be in high-quality instructional materials for mathematics. But you also talk about increased focus on early literacy with PRISM, and including an adoption for high-quality instructional materials for pre-K literacy. Can you talk a little bit about that?
So the PRISM grant, as Dr. Vidala had mentioned, I think at the last meeting, is a significant grant that focuses specifically on pre-K through grade 3. So we have existing materials in K through 3, but most grants haven't focused on that earliest year of pre-K, and so now the PRISM grant allows us to do so. So within that grant, there's an allowance for us to look at the high-quality instructional materials at the pre-K, so to set the foundation for what students will experience in kindergarten. And with that, it's not just our pre-K that we're looking at, but also PASOS, and then we have a community partner as well, in the Pathways for Children. And the idea behind that piece of the grant is that if we can expand our reach and work with organizations that work with our pre-K kids and will feed those kids into our kindergarten classes, we'll all be better off for focusing on that early literacy.
Thank you. So, and through the mayor to Dr. Chase, that's, for me, an incredibly interesting point that you made at the end there. The partnerships that we have with pre-Ks that are not public, can you, not tonight, you know, if you can tonight, great, if not, I'm not looking to put you on the spot. But some things I'd like to see are what partnerships we have with private pre-K facilities within the city, what resources we share with them, or opportunities we provide to them, if at all. And also to start talking, and for me, it's 16 years too late, but start talking about identifying how many kids in our city, or how many families in our city would want their kids to attend PBD Public Preschool if it was available to them. So we have limited number of seats in the integrated preschool. It maxes out every year. And then there's PASOS, which is a quasi-public entity that we seem to be absorbing and adopting more of each year. How many kids would come if we built it? Because, you know, I've always thought that PBD was one of the first communities to have free, full-day kindergarten, and that was a great, that was a great decision made by school committees in the past, and it's allowed us to bring kids in who, you know, aren't getting, might not be getting some services at home, and who are getting educational opportunities in our school systems that other communities still don't have. A lot of the communities still don't have free, full-day kindergarten. But I always thought that the next step would have been free pre-K, and we don't have that. And I'd like to maybe at least start by exploring how many families would be interested in that if it were available. I know we have some budgetary concerns, but it sounds like you write a lot of grants, and I know you write a lot of grants, and maybe we can explore some opportunities. But if you can perhaps get that information for us for the next meeting or two, I'd appreciate that.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. Any other questions?
That concludes superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. We'll go to the next item, which is item number five, public participation. Is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and speak? The microphone is open. Please, whoever. Thank you. Welcome, and if you could just please introduce yourself.
Hi.
Press the button on the right. Yep. Yep.
Hi, so my name is Danielle Bouchard. The primary reason why I came out to committee tonight is to come forward and speak in regards to Ms. Henry's suspension from her role as a teacher. I do believe that this decision was unjust, because I believe everyone has a right to express their opinion, and that's just all that makes us human. It's like one of the elements of being human. I believe that Ms. Henry's human rights were violated as a result of this decision. And I also believe that it's important, especially in this society, for students and people in general to be accepting of, maybe not necessarily accepting, but tolerant is a better word for it, of others' opinions and views, and having opinions and views be separate from how they treat and how they view another human being. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Thank you for being here. Anybody else would like to come forward and speak? Please, sir, if you could just introduce yourself.
Hi, so I'm Matt Keen. I have a student at Peabody High, and so as you're aware, as she was just speaking about, two of the teachers were removed earlier this month for a political speech made outside of the classroom, outside of the school. We obviously find it very troubling, given that they were speaking out against hatred, against bigotry, and the fact that the schools declined to comment on it. It took them a week to even inform parents that a teacher had been removed. And Dr. Vidala in particular has refused to speak to me or to other parents, and we're just, we're deeply troubled by how they're treating the teachers, but we're also deeply troubled by the implications for the students. These are high school students, they're intelligent, they understand that their teachers were removed for political reasons, and they understand that those political reasons were for speaking up for vulnerable students, for minorities, for trans kids, for gay kids, and the school chose to punish the teachers for that. And that is just unacceptable. So I would like to request that you provide the policy reason, the justification for removing these teachers. I'd like to ask, as I have repeatedly with the principal at Peabody High, that she speak out to the students and address this in some way, to reassure them that they will not be targeted if they speak out, if they are a member of those vulnerable groups, and she has refused to do that. And I would like to ask, I implore you to please reinstate these teachers, because this is unacceptable. And frankly, it's an embarrassment to be a part of Peabody right now. We are a laughingstock of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you for being here. Anybody else would like to come forward and speak? Okay, seeing no one, anybody remotely?
Seeing none, I'm fine.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to written communications. We do have one written communication from Bay State Textiles, the August 2025 report.
Motion to receive.
Okay. Heard the motion to receive that report from Mr. Huckman, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. All in favor of receipt of that item? Thank you. Next is subcommittee reports. Education Subcommittee, Mr. Miko, anything to report today?
Yes, very quickly, Mayor, thank you. Last week, there was a firefighter ceremony at City Hall at the Wigan Auditorium where we swore in seven new firefighters, and there were awards given to some brave men and women who went above and beyond their job to save residents. The place was packed with family and friends, and I ran into, and she's going to kill me for doing this, but I want to do this. I ran into a retired teacher, Elizabeth Offelis, Ms. Offelis, from the Brown School, and she was there, she didn't have a family member there, she probably had a friend there who was being sworn in, but she was there as their first-grade teacher 20-something years later. I thought that was awesome, and in passing, then I spoke to Ms. Dunn here, and I said, you know what? I said, she retired from the Brown School, and I don't think, I'm sure they, I know they had something at the Brown School, we didn't have anything here. And I think pre-pandemic, and this is no one's fault, except for our own, in a sense, that we used to bring in teachers, we'd have a small ceremony, we'd have some food from the high school, and then a teacher or a friend, teacher, friend, or a student would provide them with a book of their choice. And I thought that was just an awesome ceremony, and Ms. Dunn, I think you told me that, was it Doc Levine who started that? And if he didn't, he probably would take credit for it, he's probably watching. But I think this is something that we should, we should bring back. I mean, we have some great teachers who retired this past year, and over the last three to five years, and unfortunately, with COVID and everything else that's happened, I think we forgot about the real important people in the schools who, you know, and, you know, I know Ms. Offelis very well, and she deserves a book. So I want to invite her personally, and I want to invite our recent retirees, maybe to have a ceremony here during one of our meetings, and then as we move on into other years, maybe we do a more formal ceremony. I think it's important that we recognize our, you know, our great resources that we have here, and they are teachers, so. You know what? I'm going to make a motion that we do that, and it's October, can we do something in November? Can we make something happen quickly? Maybe bring in some retirees and get them a book of their choice, and maybe right before Thanksgiving, I think that's appropriate. And so I'll make that in the form of the longest motion ever.
I'll second it.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Miko, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. We're all in favor of that motion. On the motion, Mr. Huckman?
Can we all second that, please?
I'll second it.
Well, actually, if I could amend my motion, I'd like to have Ms. Dunn as a co-motion on that, because she had mentioned it to me way back when, and I think, yeah, so it's a co-motion. Thank you.
I think it was just such a lovely touch, and the teachers, or it wasn't just teachers, it was staff, any staff members that retired. A book of their choice was donated in their honor to the school library wherever they worked, and it was really very, very nice, and it was a fun time to just get together with them, wish them well. Some of them would tell us why they chose that book, and it was, it was a great, great way to honor them, a small way to honor them for their service, but also to give them that chance to stay connected with their school and with those students, because years down the road, people will pick up that book and see the book plate in the front that it was given in their honor. So I definitely, time to bring it back, and it is something that just kind of fell off during COVID and just didn't come back, and I think it is a nice idea.
Thank you. Ms. Dunn and Mr. Miko, can I recommend December 9th as the meeting? It looks as though we may have trouble finding a second meeting in November, and so the December would be a very nice celebratory, holiday-type meeting, and we could maybe have some cookies or something.
Yeah, that's all it ever was. Cookies or cupcakes, it was nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. So we have a five-person motion.
Yeah.
And...
Absolutely.
Yes. All in favor, that's a vote for approval. Okay, we're going to hold finance and school safety, athletics and wellness. Any report, Mr. Huckman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Red Sox are winning 2-1, Yoshida hit a single. Top seven, one out. We had a wellness and athletics and wellness subcommittee meeting tonight. At that meeting, we talked about the district wellness policy, and if I can, push it over to Dr. Higgins to talk about that in a little detail. We all did receive an email from Dr. Higgins this evening with that policy. If I can ask the committee to receive that. It is some policy change. It's kind of a strange thing, these things usually go through Ms. Dunn's subcommittee, but because it's a wellness plan, it's been, it stayed with my committee, which, if it's okay with you, Ms. Dunn, thank you. So we're receiving a communication today. I'd like to accept it as a first reading and follow the normal course of procedure that we would go through had it been a quality and standards policy. So I want to make a motion that we both receive this policy as a first, as a first reading only.
Second. Thank you. Heard the motion by Mr. Huckman, seconded by Mr. Miko, and we'll read the...
And then we'll go, we'll take it up as a second reading at the next school committee meeting, and if anyone has questions in the interim, direct them to Dr. Higgins. In addition to...
Thank you.
In addition to the wellness policy at the subcommittee meeting, we also, Dr. Vidala talked about broadening the scope of the wellness aspect of the athletics and wellness subcommittee. You know, we've had some unfortunate experiences here in the district in the last bit of time, and the district is responding significantly with some mental health and wellness initiatives. So if I can pass it off to Dr. Vidala to describe what it is that he envisions, the broadening of the wellness aspect of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. So this is an opportunity, as we look at the policy and we think about, an opportunity to expand the work that we're doing within the context of the school committee. There are components in the wellness policy, and I view them in four different areas. And so there's an opportunity for us to create, you know, or to, you know, sort of expand how we look at our wellness subcommittee and take on four areas. So we spend a lot of time working with food nutrition and food insecurity, and so having that as being, you know, sort of a standing subcommittee of the committee, or group of the subcommittee, and that's what a lot of the policy is around, is food nutrition. But we, also a component of that, and the second piece is health education and the curriculum that we use in our health classes, K to 12, and so that would be a great place to live in the wellness committee and be able to speak out about that, and to have some representatives do that. The third component is athletics and physical fitness, and so that's our PE teachers, but also the athletic teams that we have and the extracurricular activities. And the fourth component, which I think we're doing a lot of work on now, and it would be nice to sort of absorb this into the wellness committee, is mental health and mental wellness. So we do a lot here, and I think it'd be a nice opportunity to formalize it within the subcommittee and talk about these four areas. We do a lot of work, but being able to report out on it and having a consistent home for it, I think would be a nice evolution for us within the wellness committee as we move forward. So as we adopt a new policy, and then we... So as we adopt a new policy and then we sort of create, you know, these, these committees that we have throughout the community, this would be a nice way to live and to report out. So, you know, we can take that, you know, under advisement and consider it and maybe deliberate it on it at a future meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Vidala. So in closing out, I would like to, it is the middle of the seventh in the Bronx. And after the, at the middle of the eighth, I have Sweet Caroline being piped in here. And I hope that we'll all be singing. No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. Quality and standards, Mrs., oh, on the item, Mrs. Dunn?
Sorry, I just wanted to thank you. I think that idea for the wellness committee is really a good one because what many people may not realize outside of this committee is that the wellness committee is required by law. And breaking it down into those four components and concentrating on those and bringing it together, I think it's excellent. I really do. So I definitely support that.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. And if I may, the wellness plan that we're revising, which we adopted several years ago, requires us to meet by law four times, a minimum of four times a year. So there are some statutory requirements, and that's why we have a policy which is kind of not typical of a subcommittee.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Huckman. Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had our meeting this evening. We had a lengthy agenda. And unfortunately, we were down a member. Mr. Olympia was unable to join us. But we did some preliminary work, and we've got a lot of work to go through. We're, we're updating our policies if needed with some of the recommendations from MASC. So we're going to continue that work. We'll keep the same policies in front of us. And we'll schedule another meeting and work on that as we go forward. So nothing to present to you tonight, just to let you know we're still working on it.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Parent and student advisory boards?
OK. First off, tomorrow night was supposed to be the first parent advisory board meeting of the year. And I have to apologize, I had not realized it was the night of Yom Kippur. And the reason for scheduling that meeting was because, to be perfectly honest, I didn't even look at the calendar. I just knew that it was October 1st. It was a Wednesday. And we were going to start the month off with the PTO members because there wasn't a PTO meeting scheduled on that day. And now I know why. And I am so sorry. So I'm going to reschedule that meeting. I will check in with the PTOs to see what night their, you know, their member is available. And I will give a new date, and I will get that information out to all of, all of the parents. But the meeting for tomorrow night is definitely canceled and will be rescheduled.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Building and grounds, Mr. Huckman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of ancillary to school buildings. We had a great ceremony with the leadership of, I think, Julie Dagel and a couple of police captains and yourself, Mr. Mayor, today over at the new public safety building. It was great to see the progress that's being made there. And they are an integral part of our school system with the SROs and the state of the world today and education. So I just wanted to recognize everybody there and the great work that's being done, and I appreciate it. I also just want to point out two other things tangentially related to building and grounds. The George PBD Legacy Award Ceremony is going to be held on October 16th here at the Higgins Middle School, no, actually, I think back at the Wigan. Back at the Wigan City Hall. Please, if you haven't already purchased a ticket, please do so. The PBD Education Foundation is the organization that sponsors this or actually organizes this, and they do a lot for our school district. Fifteenth, fifteenth. October 15th is the night of the ceremony. PBD Edge Foundation does a lot for the school district. And it'd be nice for us to all be there as well as recognize the Legacy Award winners, some really, really great people who are getting recognized this year. And the last thing I have to say is thanks to the leadership of Mayor Benton Court and a whole bunch of other people. Monday, October 6th at 1:00 PM at City Hall, we'll be holding a vigil for the victims of the October 7th massacres over in Israel, praying for the safe return and release of hostages and recognizing those killed on that horrible day. So if you're available at 1:00 PM City Hall, your, your appearance is support enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huckman. OK, we will hold special education, city council legislative delegation. Mrs. Carpenter, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
OK. Redistricting, Mr. Huckman?
Nothing to report.
Performing arts, Mr. Swanson?
Yes, thank you. I had a chance to catch up with Mr. Simmons earlier, earlier in September. Full House is preparing for the musical, the musical, which is going to be held in, on Friday through Sunday, November 21st to the 23rd, the weekend before Thanksgiving. Looks like it's going to be a fun show. Obviously, we know the caliber of our, our Full House performances. So it's going to be a nice, full, fun show, preparing us for the nice holiday week that's following that. Marching band is, is attending the home game for our football. So they're up and, up and running. There's a lot going on within the performing arts for practices and preparations for their, for their fall and winter, winter performances. I'm going to extend, I'm going to extend a invitation that was given to me to y'all. On October 17th is a home game. The chorus will be singing the National Anthem at the football game. As well as the, the performing arts will be having hamburgers before the game. So I was invited. I'm going to extend because of your support for our performing arts and our arts. I'm going to let Mr. Simmons know that I've extended that invitation to y'all to attend as well and thank them and cheer them on for their performances. Dr. Vidala, I think we're going to have a sub-meeting with you as well to go over some, some line items that Mr. Simmons has provided me as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. OK, that brings us to new business. We, our next meeting is October 14th, 2025, 7:00 PM, right here in the Higgins Middle School Library. Any items for that agenda, please submit to Dr. Vidala and I for inclusion in the agenda. And if nothing further, we move to adjourn. Thank you, everybody.